This is the way off?
Yes, sir.
All right. Notice hereby given that Willis County Commissioners Court will hold a regular meeting at the County Judges' Office Commissioners Court Room at 576 West Main Street in Ranville, Texas, 785-80 on 30 April of the 10th, 2025, at 10:00 AM for the purpose of discussing the following items. During the course of the meeting, in discussion of any item, the agenda to be held executive or pro session, Willis County Commissioners Court will convene in such executive or pro session according to Section 551.01 of the Texas Department of Code. To any final action, final decision, final vote, we require the opinion of Willis County Commissioners Court with regards to any matter considered such closer executive meeting or session. Then the final decision or final vote should be either in the open meeting covered by the notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting or the subsequent meeting of the Willis County Commissioners Court upon notice that our office of county shall determine. So with that, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Madam Chief Deputy Kirk could you establish a form, please?
Yes, sir. Measure precinct one.
Present.
Measure precinct two.
Present.
Measure precinct three.
Present.
Measure precinct four.
Present.
Alamo County Judge.
Present.
We do have.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has been established, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, as we gather together, we thank you for your endless goodness to us. Thank you for all the skills and talents you have given us, and we ask for your continued blessings for everyone who calls Willis County home. Amen.
You may be seated. Four public comments and three.
It's here.
All right, so the committee, so we go to approval of claims.
Somebody else's recovery from Ms. Carmen.
Okay. Commissioners, with your approval, I think we're going to come back to line item number five. Please don't let me forget. Line item number six, approval previously submitted is follows. March 10th, 2025, special meeting. March 13th, 2025, regular meeting. March 13th, 2025, addendum number one. Regular meeting, March 18th, 2025, special meeting. Action required.
Move to approval.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia for approval. Second by Commissioner, getting any more discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number seven, Texas, provide monthly updates.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Renadila, project engineer for Texas at the San Benito area office. I'm here to provide a monthly update for the Willis County projects. I'm going to start with FM 1425. The limits of that project is FM 490 to FM 186. That project has been completed, but there's a change order on the works to implement access roads by the irrigation canal. After the project, new grades, it's a little too steep for the irrigation district to do the maintenance as, you know, as supposed to be. So we're going to be doing some access roads to allow the entrance, and that's expected to happen late this month. But as far as the original scope of work, everything has been completed. Moving to the next project, FM 490, from 1015 to FM 88. That project, right now, we're working on the north side of the road from FM 88 coming to 1015. Right now, I want to say we are a little more than halfway through. We have that that system in place, you know, the deviating traffic is going as per plan. That project is expected to be completed next year. I know with the recent rain events that we had, you know, that area was, you know, cluttered, especially the previous project that we finished from 1425 to 1015. There's another change order on the works for that. We're going to alleviate the area from a CSE job is going to be awful to allow the water to drain properly. That's expected to happen next month. That's all I got for updates. I don't know if you have any questions or comments.
I think all the units come up, it's a bit of a, I don't know, is it because within the runoff, but you called, but that is that bridge and 490.
They want to be closed down.
They want to be closed down, so it becomes of.
So that is an emergency, I guess, call that we got last week. And yes, that's going to, that's on the work, but that's going to be done to our guests, our maintenance folks in district, you know. Right now, I believe it's still closed, but a lot of the abutment guy wrote it, you know, and we need a lot of, a lot of work in there to clean. Yes.
Is there going to be some type of like partnership work with Hidalgo County Drainage?
I'm assuming. What I know is that the bridge got closed, that was the, you know, due to the emergency call that we received, there was an inspection done, and engineers at the district level decided to close the bridge. Right now, there's some coordination going on, right, to get it addressed. I can provide more information, you know, as soon as I, I get back to the office, I'll gather some information and reach out to your office to provide the latest. But I know last week when I heard that it was closed, and it was an emergency call. And the reason is because that abutment guy wrote it.
The water was coming over the levee on both sides. Actually, I was there, I took videos of it and all that.
So after the water, you know, went down a little bit, we were able to see underneath the bridge and pretty much all the abutment is devoted. There's a lot of debris under the bridge. So there's a lot of, a lot of debris on that bridge.
All right, very close.
Yes.
Let me, on 1425, anyone interrupting who was going there. All the driveways are good and complete. Could be going by there to check that out. For the houses there on 1425?
1425, which one is that one, sorry?
The one that you were talking about earlier, the first one? The first one you were talking about?
Between 490 and 186.
490 and 186. So we have the access roads.
Right.
You know, that's, that's what's pending.
Yes.
And it's expected to happen by the end of the month.
There's about four or five private driveways in there, they're all, they're all good?
Yeah.
I'll be back.
Yeah, everything is being completed.
I hadn't heard, that's why I'm.
Yes.
That's a telltale in mine, precinct.
Yeah, everything has been completed. The only pending item will be the access roads for education.
And just real quick, back to 10, back to FM 1018, we had significant, significant flood event over there. And it's back to what we were talking about there at the curve in San Antonio. If, I think the last you told me that the, the local maintenance folks were going to go out there and try to fix those ditches that are, that are holding water, you know where I'm talking about?
Yes, yes.
I know it's kind of wet right now, but it ought to dry up pretty quick. One suggestion, because a lot of stuff has come up about your local maintenance. Is there any way your local supervisor can come with you to this, this briefing?
Yes.
So we can ask him some questions?
Yes.
I know, I know they reached out to me yesterday about cleanup, debris cleanup in Sebastian. And I told them that we were, we were in the works, you know, on our end, on the county road. And they, they actually, I'm very happy, they deployed this morning, and there was a lot of debris along the curb, like their own business, and then on 506 and South Carolina. They're out there today cleaning up, and I'm appreciative of that. We'll help finish up whatever, whatever else entails after that. I appreciate it, okay?
Yeah, we'll definitely reach out to Mr. Champion.
Mr. Ken?
Yeah, that way he can be here with us on the next updates for Willis County. I know the 1018, the first initial cost, scope of work didn't have any funding for these profiles, but during the project, we noted there was a lot of standing water, so we implemented a change order to work the north side. But after we addressed the north side, then we created an issue on the south side, and that's where the contractor was not able to do it, but it's going to be done through our maintenance forces, like you mentioned.
Because they, they pulled out, we noticed that, about, about a month ago, they pulled it.
Yes, that's, that's correct. So that project has been, I guess, closed, and contractors are not coming back. But we, we know that there's a concern, and we'll address it through our maintenance section.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for coming before us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Judge.
Yes.
Can we go back to number five?
Oh, yeah, sure. Thank you, Mrs. Please, so we go back to line item number five, through a claim. Thank you, sir.
Judge, I had it. Manager, he does, move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia for approval. The claim is submitted. I stand a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner, no more discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So we go to, back to line item number eight, spread of the minutes. So we have a Texas Association of County Risk Management, who Willis County received a 2024 TAC Tech RMP Zero Loss Time Safety Award to recognize Willis County flows with no lost workdays during the 2024 coverage year. Commissioners, this is something that I always appreciate for us to be recognized on, because obviously that instills or reflects on, on safety for our, our employees. Especially these past few weeks, that, especially precincts that were out there with pumps and what have you. I know those things are, have a lot of pressure on those human, just pipes, and you're near a lot of water, which is not a good combination. But needless to say, this is for year 2024, but we went through this with also not, nobody getting hurt, it looks like. Nonetheless, it's just to recognize this president, so congratulations to all, including all the, the departments, you know, on the administrative side, law enforcement, and everyone else. With that, we go to line item number nine, and this is also spread of the minutes. Murderism issue, Moniz, Willis County, Texas Escher Collection, has completed 20 hours of educational training for 2024 year. You see? Congratulations. This is also spread of the minutes. Line item number 10, presentation of various values regarding the program, helping kids and teens for South Texas.
I do have some handouts, but I do have some.
Did you know, that's enough?
I'll, I'll do okay, thank you.
All right. Okay.
Good morning. First of all, thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes of your time. I'm Mary Alice Rodriguez, and I'm here to represent a nonprofit organization that I formed in 2019. It's called Healthy Kids and Teens of South Texas. We are a nonprofit organization. And although we formed Healthy Kids and Teens in 2019 and received IRS's designation at that time for 501(c)(3), most of the information that, the contracts that we, we get reimbursed, for the most part, from the Texas Department of Agriculture, for feeding the children in the community during the school year. It's called at risk, and we feed them supper. And then during the summer, we have another contract with TDA, and that is the SFSP, the Summer Feeding Service Program, which brings me to being here before you today. We would like to be able to feed the children in the summer. We would like to start in Sebastian. We are in the process of maybe renting a commercial kitchen so that we're able to expand. We're based out of Hidalgo County. And so we do, we do a lot of outreach, it's part of being a nonprofit. We have fundraisers, we, we're very much a part of the community. We're based out of Hidalgo, Texas, in Hidalgo County. So I do have figures as far as the meals that we've provided. COVID stopped us for a little bit, but in 2021, we served a little over 3,600 meals to children. 2022, almost 50,000 meals were distributed. And 2023, 65,000. And last year, we provided over 105,000 meals for your parents and the children. Like I said, TDA reimburses us for the most part, but we are, we are to maintain a nonprofit status. So as far as the summer feeding, you know, many, many families struggle to provide nutritious meals to the children, especially when school is out. Leaving these children very vulnerable to hunger, or, you know, we are in an underserved area. So that was the plan, for us to be able to provide free meals to the children in the area and maybe mitigate some of the hardships financed by, faced by parents because of the rising costs in, in food. So if that's the case, if we're able to, because for the most part, in the beginning, we would be transporting the meals over here. Unless we're able to find a local kitchen, commercial kitchen, and that way, you know, we would have the hot meals, because they're always hot meals. Willis County is considered a rural county, and so TDA allows us to like bundle and kind of like drop off frozen items, but we never do that. We cook hot meals. I have, in here, I have menus that we've used in the past for breakfast and for lunch. And so since Willis County is rural, we're able to also bundle, which means that we could provide breakfast and lunch at once. And the children don't necessarily have to eat, they're on site, as in Hidalgo County, as in Cameron County. The parents, as long as they, or guardians, as long as they provide some type of identification, which we make no copies of, we don't take pictures of, that the child exists. We want to make sure that the plate goes to the child and not the, the deo or the grandpa, you know. So once that is given to us, we provide some type of, of a little, little card, kind of like if you were to purchase barbecue tickets, and then you drive through, and it's like, I have four tickets or five. Then, you know, we would go to the vehicles and we would distribute the meals to the parent or guardian. Unless the child is with them in the vehicle, then they don't need to show anything. So that is basically it. We want to be able to, to serve in this underserved area free hot meals to the children in the summer. Now, the schools do, they're required, because of the National School Lunch Program, they are required to serve breakfast and lunch during summer, summer school. But that's normally just June, or just a month. And the children, it would just be for the children that are there, or if they come from inside, from outside, and then, you know, eat there at the cafeteria, wherever that may be. But like I said, we would love to be able to feed the children throughout the entire summer, if at all possible.
So Mary Alice reached out to me about two or three weeks ago about this idea. I thought it was a great idea. I, the next line item is the resolution, which I sent to the judge and to Ms. Nola's side. It, it's, I think it's a great program. We do have a facility there in South Carolina that would allow, kind of like as a meeting point, which is the Sebastian Community Center. Obviously, there's not a commercial kitchen or anything in there at, you know, at this time, but I think it would fit, fit the needs, and I think it, it kind of hits close to home, because I hope Mary Alice doesn't mind, she's, she's from the Sebastian area.
This is my dad.
Her daddy's here. He lives there in Sebastian, and I actually went to school with Mary Alice. She's a little younger than I am, but she, she went to school there. And I, I think it's a great idea, hadn't heard of it. And I'm glad to bring that towards this, this, this area and try to help the children out. I think it would be a great opportunity. Of course, there's going to be some things we've got to work through, you know, I think.
But that's only going to be in that area, that's it? No other, expanding Las Aras, San Feliz?
Yes, exactly. I mean, that would be the plan, but it really wouldn't be feasible for me to bring all the meals from our central kitchen, which would take about an hour. That is the reason why, I guess, for capacity reasons, and to be able to provide the hot meals more widespread, for us to be able to rent a kitchen and hire local staff as well, which would probably be maybe five, five to six for the summer, in the kitchen and for distribution.
Is there a nutritional guideline that you have followed?
Yes, good question. There is a meal pattern, and it's basically five components. It is a low-fat milk, a protein, which isn't necessarily meat, could be eggs or peanut butter, for example, a bread or a grain, a whole grain or a bread, and then a fruit and a veggie. So all five components have to be part of the lunch. As far as breakfast, it would be the milk again, the bread or the grain, and a fruit.
So, so how many, how many meals are we talking about, maybe?
Okay, so, another excellent question. The, whenever I add a new site, the Texas Department of Agriculture starts with 75. Until I can show that there are children that didn't receive a meal, then the, I can submit that proof, and the approval is within one, on the average one business day. However, I could probably also do pre-registration if it is approved. That way, I can see if, if for some reason, because I really, at this point, don't know how many children would be taking advantage of this, or families. But if there was some type of a pre-registration, we'd have a better idea. And the TDA would give, if the case is that it's more than 75 per site, then they could start off at a higher number.
How do you determine which kids will receive it? Like, do you partner up with the schools and get, get a head count, or do you?
Well, that was, that was why I mentioned pre-registration, but everyone qualifies, as long as they're school-aged children. And those with disability, 21 and younger.
So would this be just strictly drive-through? Are there any exceptions for, like, the disabled children? Maybe they're not able to, I know they don't drive, but their parents might just have, you know, other things to do. Are there delivery options that?
There is delivery options, absolutely, yes.
And so what's the, what would be the time of the drive-through service? What did they live with?
It could be as much as two hours, anywhere from 30 minutes to two hours.
In the morning?
Children don't wake up early in the mornings, in, in the summer, I've noticed that. But maybe 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, and then there has to be at least two hours between meal service times.
Sounds very good, that's a good question. I think it's going to be fluid the more, you know, it gets rolling. And this is just for a presentation, I think the next one is.
Okay, I did get these in order. Apologize for that. And it does include a menu which can be changed, which can be improvised. If, if there's something on the menu that maybe you don't like. If there's, if there's anything that a child has maybe a medical reason that he or she cannot have, all we need is some type of documentation, medical documentation indicating, okay, well then, if the child is allergic to strawberries, let's say, what can we substitute? We don't automatically just substitute it with another fruit. We need to be able to know what it is that the child counter can have. Thank you.
So, Mary Alice.
We'll stay here.
You mentioned that, now we're going to go into the next line item, but you, you mentioned that, that you've done this program under Hidalgo County?
Yes, it's, it's for all of Texas, but we're based out of Hidalgo.
But you've done in Hidalgo County?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And, and so, and you're from Sebastian, obviously?
I am, I graduated from Lifeford back in the 80s. I have an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, and an MBA.
And my question, my question is, so you, being from Sebastian, you know the community, and you've also had experiences in Hidalgo County and Sbarro's communities?
Yes.
So obviously, you feel that the program that you are asking for us to approve fits into the community of Sebastian?
I feel that it is a very underserved area. In fact, I had talked to my dad some years back, but I understood that someone that I had trained, who also does the same thing, was distributing here in this county. For the longest time, I thought that, I think they're called Bright Nutrition out of Brownsville. So I thought, okay, you know, there has to be a certain amount of miles between the, the service areas, so I didn't bother. And then I did some more research, I called, which I didn't really get a true answer. But then there's a map that TDA provides as far as the locations. And there wasn't anybody, other than the schools, like I said, they're required for summer school to be giving the children. So I thought, I'll go for it and see if, you know, it'll be approved, so hopefully. I can answer any other questions you may have. I appreciate your time.
So then, multiple step. So if there are any more questions, we go to 11?
Yes.
And it's a discussion, actually, to approve, including to MOU with Healthy Kids and Teens of South Texas Peak, to provide meals to children and teens in Sebastian, Texas, and surrounding areas. Action required.
I, I'll make a motion to, to approve by number 11.
So move. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Paus. Any more discussions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Judge, comes with a, with an MOU here, do we need to read that out, or?
No.
Nope.
I've reviewed it already, just it was sent to me ahead of time.
Sounds right.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I appreciate it. What would it take to serve the other, the other towns in Willis County?
Yeah. Yeah, um, I'm barely initiating the process of looking for, uh, uh, I guess appropriate kitchen, um, so that, because I have a deadline also, which would be May first to submit everything. And, uh, at that point, it does ask, you know, where the food is going to be, uh, prepared. So, um, I'm kind of in a time crunch, uh, but I'm definitely looking for that. And I would notify.
No.
Um, the precinct commissioner and his department, um, when, when that time comes because I, I'll, I'll figure it out.
So, so what I'm hearing is that i- if, if we do find a centralized kitchen, it doesn't necessarily have to be in South Town. It can be in.
Oh, right.
Raymondville, Lyford, and then they can serve the rest of the, that's what I'm hearing. Because there'd be more opportunity in Raymondville.
The logistics would be a lot better, a lot, uh, more improved rather than, uh, coming in from DeRado County every day, twice a day, maybe twice a day. Because normally, it's a hot meal, unless it's cereal for breakfast.
Yeah, because I'm just, I just, if I get, if I get questioned or whatever, I just want to know what it means in a motion by surrounding areas. You know what I mean? So, somebody lives two miles away from Sebastian, and they ask, hey, can, well, I don't know.
Right.
I don't know what's around the area.
That was, that was my suggestion, uh, only because, uh, since Sebastian doesn't have a designated, uh, boundaries, it's not a township, uh, I couldn't really say, the, the city of Raymondville, you can d- define the city of Raymondville, right? And, or the city of Lyford or, or San Pablita. But because Sebastian doesn't really have boundaries, that's why I, I, I said surrounding areas. Because at this point, it was the Sebastian, uh, and I know it, it could, it could be interpreted to include any and all of Willacy County, uh, but I, it just meant the surrounding areas because Sebastian is not a township or a municipality. That's why I had to read it that way. Uh, it's kind of hard to say which boundaries there are in, 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 in that, in that sense. But I don't believe I understood it to read the contract that you had to pr- bring in, um, in some, like, for example, uh, cities, you have to bring in like a utility bill to show where you live. So, it didn't have that requirement on it. It only meant, uh, that that provided, uh, like a geographical area. But it was intentionally meant to include as, to be able to expand into other areas without having to come back to Commissioner's Court for, like, for example, Lasada, San Pablita, out, you know, the other areas within Willacy County, so.
Okay, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, you know, you'll get questions on that. But tha- that's the legal part of it, but intentionally, it was left to be able to not have to continue to come back to Commissioner's Court. Now, you can go to, again, like, uh, Lyford, Raymondville, Lasada, San Pablita, you, you wouldn't have to necessarily turn kids away, uh, just because they don't live in that area. That's at least how I read the MOU was, it's intended to feed as many children as possible, uh, just in, in kind of like that, that general area.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so, so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We go to line item number twelve. Yes.
You need a vote.
Oh, we need a vote.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And I'll uphold the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Line item number twelve. Discussion action in regards to approval travel for monthly placement visits for juvenile probation officers to be paid out of juvenile probation department fund ninety-five travel training account line item ninety-five four hundred one fifty. Action required. Uh, Commissioners, I had to sit down with, uh, our auditor, and what, what she's saying is that, um, it's coming out of his budget, uh, from his line item, but that in order for her to be able to actually, uh, submit a check for, for this expense, it needs to be approved to Commissioner's Court. And, and as you understand, in the juvenile probation department, uh, his budget is partially funded by the state, partially funded, funded by the, by the county. And so that triggers, uh, us having to approve travel and training specific for this department. And that's how she explained it, and I think that, that's the recommended, um, uh, recommended motion that the, that she provided. If I can entertain a motion?
Uh, make a motion, Judge, for approval of travel for monthly placement visits for juvenile probation officers to be paid out of juvenile grant fund ninety-five travel training account line item ninety-five dash four hundred dash one fifty until this funding is no longer available.
Second. Motion line, Commissioner DeLa Paz, second by Commissioner De La Paz. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And I'll uphold the same sign. Motion carries. Line item number thirteen. Discussion act to consider paying county employees that got called to assist in the flooding event that occurred on March twenty-seventh twenty-twenty-five. Action required. Commissioners, uh, I, I know that, uh, we had, uh, some conversation individually with, with especially Commissioner Preising Four and Preising Two pertaining to the event that we just went through. And, uh, and, uh, uh, again, um, uh, that's a recommended motion should we, uh, decide to, to, to approve for that. Uh, and I think just to be clear, and, uh, in the spirit of transparency, so the, uh, the idea is for us to pay the employees that got called kind of on an emergency basis due to the flooding situation, uh, in the precincts that, that got affected and that indeed had employees, uh, out there manning pumps and what have you. And also, uh, on the law enforcement side, uh, we have, uh, Constable Oviedo. Uh, and I have gotten with, uh, with Constable Garza pertaining specifically to that. Uh, in my conversations, I have also, um, gotten with, uh, with our county sheriff as well. And so that is, uh, that's the, this.
This was a, a thought that came, you know, to my mind, and, and it wasn't anything new. My understanding was in twenty-eighteen. It was, it was also done, uh, sooner by, uh, by the past Commissioner's Court. And, and what it does, it, it incentivizes the employee because they're, they're, they're doing the work outside their normal scope of, of, you know, uh, every day road and bridge maintenance, uh, de-watering, running, uh, flooding, uh, uh, running, uh, these large pumps, running all up and down the county and going to retreat pumps. We actually just shut down our pumping operation yesterday, uh, and we returned all our pumps. We had four that were returned far, that were key end pumps. These, these, uh, these pumps require a lot of work. They require a lot of maintenance, reviewing, uh, uh, you know, regular, regular.
PM.
You know, it's twenty-four hours a day. So, uh, I think this incentivizes the employee. And actually, uh, Commissioner, um, Senator Posit suggested, you know, like a response team the next time something like this happens. You know, of course, it's a disaster declaration if it happened on day one. Uh, we went from, you know, recovering or, or rescuing people out of, out of their flooding homes and, and then it progressed into, uh, you know, the final stage, and we were not wanting to clean them. But, but regardless, uh, I think it incentivizes the employee in it. It would, uh, you know, if we do have a strike force, we could have, you know, people from other precincts come in and help. Whatever it may happen, it's going to happen, you know, uh, some, something's going to happen, whether it's a hurricane or whatever kind of disaster. Uh, so we looked into it. I talked to, uh, our auditor, and it was, it was a doable, doable deal to pay them out just what they earned over the forty hours, uh, during the disaster declaration, which we're still under at this point. Uh, it's already scaling way back. And, and, uh, basically, it's coming out of our own budget. You know, uh, in some cases, we may be a little over towards the end of the year, but we have money in there to go. So, it's coming out of our own budget. We're not asking for any money from, from the court. I'm not sure about the last one there. But, uh, but, uh, regardless, uh, I, I think it's a great idea. It's a great incentive, and, uh, you know, I, I, I'd like for it to, to go forward doing even like this.
Uh, this is just a suggestion.
I think there's a suggested, uh, motion that I think Ms. Carmen submitted.
Does that, that include everyone else, like, uh, county admin and, uh, maintenance department?
Y- yes, we, we talked about that, whether there was.
Some or one or two.
But there isn't.
There isn't?
No. That we could find. And to answer your question on the, uh, Deputy Constable, it's yes. No, no, no budget will be, uh, over.
Okay, good.
Within budget.
Yeah, and, and that's the main thing, uh, I, I think, is, is we schedule it right. And of course, going forward, maybe that's not a part of this topic, but we will be putting another line item in to cover these kind of expenses. They got to meet a certain criteria.
In the future and budget time?
Yes, like an overtime budget, just, just for something like this. I guess that's what it could be called, but, uh.
So, I'm just wondering, should we, uh, maybe consider doing a separate timesheet for that instead of making everything so confusing with a regular timesheet?
At, at this point, I don't know if there's anything policy for that. We, we, we did kind of submit one timesheet, and I think the easiest way to get this reported, it's got to be, you know, you're, uh, if you get paid, if you responded to this and the road and bridge employees, it's going to be anything over the forty hours that was pertaining to this call-out. So, it's easier to track it like that. And then it, it'll, it'll, I guess, that amount of banked, and then it's, okay, well, these were the hours that we worked during this. Because, see, we don't, we don't normally have any comp time for, for the road and bridge employees. I've got one that's got from residual from, from, uh, past administration. The other ones that I have, they don't have any comp time. So, normally, it would have been banked and, you know, and there's no incentive at that point. But, uh, I don't know. I'm open to suggestions on that.
In my understanding, it needs to be specific as to the dates of the.
Yeah, because on our regular timesheet, you, you, you don't have room to, to do the, you'd say my guys worked Friday, their regular time was to leave was eleven-thirty that morning? Well, they came right back at twelve o'clock, and they worked to eight-thirty, nine o'clock that night, and we worked Saturday, Sunday, and the holiday.
What I, what I have done with my staff, whenever we've had to do that, is in the note section, I start putting the time on there. This is all like, uh, ex, I would say like additional for it, for example, when we're in trials that carry on, sometimes we're in the trial and it's going to be sixty hours in one week.
So, on that same timesheet?
I write in the notes.
We, we need to write it down in the notes.
I put that in, especially if it's beyond, like, uh, Commissioner said, beyond the normal working hours.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. So, at the point that they started accruing beyond the working hours, and you just jump in and tell me, because Carmen's let me do that, as far as like, uh, uh, the explanation on the note is, is when it, I'm still putting it in there as other. So, for example, if their hours were four hours on that day, that was all they were going to work, I put the other four hours or ten hours, however many extra hours in the other. But every time I put it in for other, extra time, I, I try to explain what the other is for.
That, 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 that did. It gets a little confusing, but.
No, that's why.
You have to stay on it every day, as well, so I'm, yeah.
And this is, again, in a, out of the ordinary type of event, so, uh, uh, and, and the only reason, so because you're paying our comp time, you can't pay, uh, uh, go back for like payroll. It's going to be considered comp time because it, the way it, it happened, it was in addition to their regular forty hours, they were also doing this, this work. So, that's how it's, it's my understanding from Carmen, how it was going to get paid as comp time for that time period. That comp time was going to get paid out.
Good. So, uh, make a motion for the approval to pay out the next payroll, on the next payroll, the comp time earned for all road and bridge maintenance employees, administration, administration maintenance supervisor, and deputy constable who were called in to assist in the, uh, March twenty-seventh twenty-twenty-five flood recovery event and accrued comp time during the week of March twenty-seventh twenty-twenty-five to April, I would, I would guess, I don't know when we're going to, when it's going to, uh, I'm guessing as.
Pending.
April eleventh is the last day of the.
April eleventh?
Payroll, yeah. Uh, but, uh, county auditor, my fellow didn't want a, a clarification, uh, up to what end date, um, you were going to allow the payout of this company.
Is Frank still on the operations center? Is he still in?
Yeah, he is. Because like, like you say, I, I know we're in the recovery stage. Uh, you know more than I as far as whether there's, uh, furniture pile-up in, in kind of houses.
What? I, I think on, on that recovery, we got a lot to do, but I, I think we can fit it into the regular nine-hour schedule. Uh, I, I would say once those pumps went back, those are the, those are the barriers to get done because they're twenty-four hour a day. Uh, and we already returned them all, so I don't know if we want, I, I called it yesterday in Frank to tell him, you know, all the pumps are returns, they're done. It took us all the people, we got them all back, and, uh, I mean, you know, we could end it.
I got a lung pump this month.
And that's the thing.
Mine's the one. But, uh, we're doing that during normal work hours. Like, they just want to field it up, and we go ahead and shut it down maybe by next week, or that's how much water's out there. But that's going to be during a warm, normal workday.
Right. So, do you think we should just carry it to the end of the picture, which is Friday and midnight?
If, on the eleventh, you mean Friday?
Yes, sir.
You could, and then if, for, if there's a, some, something unforeseen that comes up again, it could always come back, uh, to the Commissioner's Court.
So, okay.
You're in the middle of a motion.
Yeah, in my motion, I'll finish it. March twenty-seventh twenty-twenty-five to April eleventh. Twenty-two five.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner De La Paz. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And I'll uphold the same sign. Motion carries. Line item fourteen. Discussion act to seek bids for bank depository contracts required. Mr. Rubin?
That's my item. Every two years, the county needs to, first attitude, uh, seek bids for the bank depository contract, and our contract expires in June.
So, we're just going for, for bids?
Yes.
So, who to approve it?
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
And I'll uphold the same sign. Motion carries. Line item number fifteen. Discussion act to inquire with Tac about changing website and email domain to dot gov. Action required. And this came down from Tac, Mr. Rubin?
Yes. This is just to seek what it would cost to change the, the email domain from the CO.willicie.txt.us to a shorter one, which would be just willlicie.gov. And this, and they won't give us pricing until we get permission from the court to even seek that. And then they would tell us what it would cost to, to migrate the current emails to the new email.
But right now is just a discussion to inquire. So, who to approve it?
I have a second. Commissioner, I have a second by Commissioner Garcia.
And I believe even, uh, I think they were asking the Seuss, the court.
So, the county, the district clerk's office and the district court office are migrating to an app known as E-CoRts. With an E-CoRts, they need a subdomain directed to our main domains that they can facilitate this network traffic.
But that, that would be need to.
It coincides with.
The data.
Because, look, this is, this is the, the issue that, that I foresee. So, and you tell me. So, we have all these, I've, I've always said, right, you reach in, uh, communications amongst ourselves, other tax entities and what have you, which as an example, take me, they have me as with this accounting, that, whatever, whatever, right? Okay, so all of a sudden, we're changing.
So.
So, what happens to all these contacts?
Just like when you go to the post office and you move from one, five, six days.
It's obtained in the butt.
You, so, so I'm saying that, that they facilitated by you forwarding your, your address and your physical address, same thing with a, with a domain.
Okay, so, so what you're telling me, and I just want, you know, as an example, right now, communicating, I'm just not to, they can hurt anyway, but, uh, Representative Lopez, right, I'm communicating with her. So, how is that going to change, assuming hypothetical, my email address changes tomorrow?
It, it won't change. It'll, the, the system will know when they email the CO.willicie.txt.us, it'll forward it to the new one.
It'll forward, it'll show you, uh, forward. For several months, right?
Once they start updating their own, or their own, they do.
So, for access to it, because we have to archive it, and sometimes I get public information requests, I'll need to know that, that as well, because I may also still need to have access to old email.
Tac will migrate everything.
Into the new one?
Yeah. The way they did when they upgraded the security, that we were down for a couple hours in that, one time back in twenty-two.
Did they change it up again? Just want to make sure that we're not going to lose anything.
No, we won't lose any content at all.
It's supposed to be a more secure, um.
Yes.
Email system also.
And I think.
Not only shorter, but more.
I think they even told the Seuss that more reputable.
Yeah.
All right. So then, getting back, I have to make my spiel on that. So, getting, getting back to what, uh, needs to be put in the motion in order for us to uh needs to be put in the motion in order for us to continue this effort of looking into, right, that's what we're saying. What is it that needs to be in the motion?
And we need to add a subdomain or to facilitate E Courts?
Okay, so that's not part of the agenda item? The only thing we have is changing the website and the email domain. So I would suggest that you probably need to add that as a separate one, because right now, the dot gov has not yet been approved. So it's an inquiry only, until it's been approved, then the subdomain can be.
This is just for us to even get TAC to even.
Right.
Look at it.
Right.
All right, and and since they communicated with with you, Mr. Rubin, um they they mentioned anything about uh that it be better cost, do you know?
No, but they they said there would be a fee to migrate, but and I think the fees would stay the same. The monthly fee to maintain the email.
There'll be a fee to make the the change.
Yeah, just to copy all the files over.
Ruben, uh last question, uh there's no other entity, you know, that we know of that's usually, that's using Willacy dot gov?
No, that that domain is available. And TAC said if it wasn't, what they do for counties, they do, like for example, it would be Willacy dot Texas dot gov, which is still kind of long, but luckily, Willacy dot gov is available.
So oh, so it's straight up Willacy dot gov?
Well, it's our decision, but I know, I know you mentioned that you would like it shorter, so I mean, Willacy dot gov is available.
That's true.
Other counties that I know TAC gave me, like Hood County, which is Hood dot Texas dot gov, and there's other ones that are just the same, but it it can be long.
So uh make a motion to inquire.
So I have a motion and a second.
We have a.
You're having?
Yes. Just to see if we could, and I kind of figured that we won't be able to, but nonetheless, we are able to move forward.
Yes, we're able to look into it.
Great, okay, so I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll uphold same sign, motion carries. Line item number sixteen, consideration for the location of solicitation and request for proposal for the Willis County Health and Welfare Employee Benefit Program. So I know that this has come up to the insurance committee.
Yes.
At least twice.
Yes.
So.
It's been, it's been a few years that the county has stopped to seek bids on the insurance uh industry plan. So our consultant recommended to the committee that we seek bids and just see what options we get.
Then, this is more just to stay checked, to make sure that we're getting, you know, the most for a buck, basically?
Yes, and I know that Ms. Navarro reviewed it, and she said, you know, the the bid looked good. So we are, we're good to advertise it as we get approved.
So who to approve it?
I have a motion by Commissioner, a second to approve, and second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll uphold same sign, motion carries. Line number seventeen, discussion action to create login with TAC for Jesus Vasquez to be able to post items on web website, action required. Uh Commissioner, uh this, and and I think this is where this is coming from. Uh we do have um an obligation, I think, as 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 Commissioner's Court to 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 put on the website, uh you know, things like attendance and so forth, and and we're doing that. However, it's sometimes very hard because, I think you, Ruben, are the one that.
Yes, currently, currently, I post everything on the website for the county. But uh this year, I I'm president for the Treasurers Association, so I've been a little busier than normal, so sometimes uh things are a little delayed on posting.
Right, and in the earlier conversations, Commissioner, just so you, that you know this, is that as the websites in general became more uh popular with local governments, I'm targeting general here, to where basically, if you remember, and I'm going back, uh all we had to do was post the agenda in front of the door, and I think in other parts, and then uh obviously, technology, right, and websites came in and so forth. So so now the reason we're here is because, oh, so the the other part to it is that we didn't want everybody to be able to put things in the website, because then it 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 would maybe um not serve its purpose, because there was gonna be too much out there, right, from different departments and what have you. So so that's why we kind of had just one individual uh do that. Part of, one of the many reasons. And so now what we're saying is to have Jesus be able to do that, because uh I think that Mr. Rubin, as you say, is not here sometimes, and I know sometimes you're able to do it from your phone or wherever you're at, and I appreciate it. You know, there's been times that he says, well, I'm on the road, well, Mr. Rubin, can you just pull over? I mean, you know, and I put him on the spot, really, but uh so I I I I think that if if we do approve our Jesus, I I don't think that, and and I think we can take it a step further, that perhaps we can say um to kind of have a, I guess, a gatekeeper is uh, and you tell him, sir, because you actually do it. To have Jesus approve, maybe by me or someone, whatever he's putting. With that, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Well, we only put what the department's request on there. Like the county clerk has required postings that they have to do, like the uh auctions that they do, the trustee sale.
Trustee sale.
And then I know that the elections department has mandated postings that they have to do.
Okay, so then the the, I guess, the check and balance would be for him to get approval from the department, right?
Well, they're requesting it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But it can't come from any choice, an example?
Oh, no.
It comes typically from the the department head. I don't recall off the top of my head if we already have policy on what gets posted, but if we don't.
TAC has a required mandated posting.
Right, but I I don't know if if internally, other than the ones that we have to post, I don't know if internally, we have any kind of process in place as far as what county, what the Commissioner's Court has approved, as far as within our own policy of what what is we're able to post. So it's something that that we can look at, so you can, you can pretty much make the rules right now uh as far as as how that would work, if it needs to come from a department head uh or something to that effect.
Well, I think, and you knowing, Ruben, if you like, uh if 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 we were to say uh upon the department head approval, that's something we're doing already?
Well, no, it was like the county clerk, uh different employees in that office do email me the required uh postings, like those auctions, not just Liz or Susan's.
Okay, but.
And same thing in the elections office, either Christina or uh Yessen.
But most of the requests, maybe all of them come through email? Okay, so can we say that the uh the department head be copied as an example? I mean, I think that would make it, I I just don't want for there to be information out there coming from somebody other than the department head, that's my. Especially because we get so much information about uh new things happening, right? I'm talking about from outside the county, right, that that this is happening, and then, and I've said this before, a a lot of that information is insignificant or not relevant, you know, a a lot of it, unfortunately, more than half is delete, 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 right? And so I'm just afraid that there'll be something put up out there or something that's not legitimate, and yet we have it in our website. That that's what I'm saying, I just don't want it to to happen.
I I think.
I'm being proactive here.
I I think also, well, what you're saying, Judge, about posting unnecessary things is the time that you, we made push for this request was because Ruben was unavailable.
Yeah.
And something pertinent needed to be put up or posted immediately. So, and and my, you know, speaking for myself, maybe a bit selfishly here, is the only time I've seen myself posting this, when it comes right out of your directive.
Yeah, and I can still do it, this is just adding back up in case.
Yeah, I gotta figure that, that's why you came up, because.
And TAC needs, TAC needs those.
What if we uh say something in effect, if we were taking motions that that we uh authori- or I might be mostly correct, to log in for uh with TAC for Jesus Reyes Vasquez to be able to post items on the website according to TAC policy, county policy, and it must be, have an email attached to it, you know, with the policy.
Is there any further motion?
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alanis Zamorano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. And I'll uphold same sign, motion carries. All right, we go to line number eighteen, discussion action to create login with TAC for Jesus Vasquez to be able to maintain email's account.
This is the same thing, it's just there's two different logins, ones for the website and then ones for the email. So in case somebody forgets their password or they're locked out of their email, like uh if they, when it tries to verify by text, that those people either change their number or, this is just to give Jesus access to be able to help that employee get back into their email, or create a new email address for a new employee, or delete an address for an employee who left the county already.
So who to approve it?
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejada.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alanis Zamorano, any more discussion?
Judge, uh the only thing I would add is uh, I know that uh this isn't necessarily outlined in the contract with Mr. Vasquez, so if you can uh include maybe an amendment with that to include this work as well uh as something that he's authorized to do, because under the contract, it doesn't include this. So if he can forward that, then we can just get that uh before Commissioner's Court.
And no extra consequences?
Well, I think it's probably gonna be added on to the the bill probably, Judge, but uh as far as just, because the contract was specific on what he he is authorized to do, we we just need to make sure he's included in this.
I don't want to negotiate here in public with.
Yes, sir.
All right, so um but but the motion's okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll, and I'll uphold same sign, motion carries. Line number nineteen, discussion approval of victim assistance coordinator and one victim advocate for the Willis County District Attorney's Office to attend the twenty twenty-five South Texas All Hazards Conference in McAllen, Texas, on March twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, action required.
Judge, this one was mine, uh it was the per diem only that they needed to get paid, and then uh uh we didn't get it into the regular uh travel fee in time, so I sent two advocates to that, so I think it's I think one meal one day and two meals the other day. And the only reason why it was two meals the other day is because it took them three hours to get back on that Friday or Thursday, whatever day it was that it started raining. So they were gone for twelve hours from from Willacy, but it's it's a per diem only.
So who to approve it?
I have a motion by Commissioner, a second by Commissioner Tejada, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll uphold same sign, motion carries. Line number twenty, discussion approval of two victim advocates, an investigator, and other staff member for the Willis County District Attorney's Office to attend the uh Listo El, Eliseo Listo RGV Conference in South Padre Island, Texas, from September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-sixth, uh twenty twenty-five.
I'm not sure why this is a separate travel one, Judge, but it's it's essentially for travel, so I I don't remember if, why we put it like this.
We asked Cindy, and she said, for that, my name on that's what I think.
Oh, okay, so I'm not, I'm not exactly sure why, it's just supposed to be just regular travel. I think that's, that's how it was listed.
Okay, so meaning it could be included in the regular travel line item?
Exactly.
I get, it won't hurt to approve it.
So who to approve?
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner, a second by Commissioner Tejada. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll uphold same sign, motion carries. Line number twenty-one, discuss, consider select engineering slash architectural service providers to complete project-related engineering slash uh item culture services for the coastal management program funding administered by the Texas General Land Office, action required.
No, that's my approach.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay, so um on Willacy County, uh sent a request for qualifications of the twenty twenty-two coastal management program. The requests were sent on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, and they were sent via email, and they were also advertised in the Willacy County Chronicle, the Rainbowville Chronicle, with a deadline of March eighth, twenty twenty-five. Only one statement of the qualifications from an engineering firm was received as follows. And that one is uh the only one that we received is Shivey Consulting LLC. The SOQ was received by a, by the selection committee and determined to satisfy the sel- the selection criteria in the RFQ. And the committee, um we had three committee members representing Willacy County. It was our Willacy County Code Enfor- Code Enforcement, Mr. Robert Salinas. We had a county commissioner of precinct one, Ms. Polly Alves, Commissioner Polly Alves. And then we had representing our county commissioner precinct uh two, uh Mr. Bruce Usbalson. So we did have a diverse uh group as a committee. And so I did inquire with the Texas General Land Office if, because we had a sole, like like in the past, it's sole vendors or just one application, if we were still able to score, or if it was in the form of a memorandum, I was advised that it is eligible, but nonetheless, that we did need selective committee to score the projects. So uh the invitations were now via email and again advertised in the Willacy County Chronicle. Um so this is what I have before you today, and.
Or the second.
You know. We did have uh the committee select, and it was for a total of two hundred seventy-six points calculated from three. And so we do have the surveying sheet that includes experience, work performance, capacity to perform, and then the total score.
All right, so they came in with the guidelines?
Yes, sir. Uh again, this is uh the phase two for this Fred Stone Park uh construction, which would include a new restroom facility. It would also include with a rinse station, sidewalks, lighting, and parking lots. Um so we did get uh, remember the, just so that you can feel more comfortable, the cycle twenty-six, as you all know, took a little bit longer than we would have wanted. So we did have Mont McDonald engineer the design, but it also, part of the guidelines from the Texas General Land Office is that when we go to the, through the, in the construction phase, we still need to hire an engineer for the construction phase. We're hoping that they can work with the engineering plans of the design for Mont McDonald. Uh so this is what I have before you today.
Is this the same project that uh I guess Mont McDonald had, and then they?
Yes, sir.
They didn't go forward?
We, yes, um initially, we disengaged from the first engineer, and then we RFQ'd it, and Mont McDonald uh was the selected vendor, and they did design it successfully, and now we're in the construction phase. However, Mont McDonald did not submit an application, we only received one, which is Shivey. They have done work along the coast, uh they will also reference in the application, they've done several work for Cameron County. So, and I've had the opportunity to speak to others, just, you know, uh before I presented to you today, and and I feel comfortable as the committee does, making this recommendation to the court today.
This particular?
This particular consultant.
Has worked with?
Yes, sir, they've done coastal projects along the Texas coast.
They have like forty years of experience, and the hard end office that they do have, they've been local for fourteen years, but they've done different projects, you know, along the same scope as the one we're entertaining. Um the two engineers have forty-five years' experience each, and the rest of the team has like an average twenty years' experience.
Civil engineering as well.
They've dealt with very grand programs, and throw out their practice.
That's the committee's recommendation.
Yes, sir, and as you know, this project, we're ready to move along with the Fred Stone Park Phase Two construction phase.
Make a motion to approve resolution to select engineering and architectural service providers to complete project-related services for the coastal management program funded and administered through the Texas General Land Office, GLO, for the Fred Stone Park Phase Two Construction Contract Number twenty-four dash zero nine nine dash zero one. twenty-four dash zero nine nine dash zero one zero dash eight, five, four, six.
I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner, I have a second by Commissioner Alani Somorano.
Thank you.
No more discussion.
Do you need the, the name of the engineer? Do you have a motion?
Preferably, um, a motion.
So I need.
Shebe, let me go ahead and may I approach the bench, like we handed to Commissioner La Paz.
Sure.
His name's on page twenty-one.
So your main even motion? Shebe on the front.
Going to go ahead and amend the mo- my motion?
I have amended motion to Commissioner Ford.
To include the name of the engineering firm to She- Shebe Consulting LLC?
Yes.
Okay, I have amended motion, do I have an amended second?
Second.
You have an amended second, any more discussion? All in favor, signature five percent, aye? And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. You understand?
Yeah.
You have one. Okay, where do you, where you found it, right? Where you did it. Line item number twenty-two, discussion action to approve submitting Coastal Erosion Planning Response Act grant application to the Texas General Land Office for Phase One of the Luna Point Park Shoreline Protection Project on or before May first, twenty twenty-five. Action required.
Yes, Judge, um, it's that time again that we have the opportunities to, um, write another grant, or actually two for KEPPRA funding. Uh, today, I'm very happy that Derek's able to, um, present this to you, it is also inserted in your packets. And then if you have any further questions regarding that or anything like that, I'll be really glad to, to present.
Well, Commissioners, how are you doing?
Good morning.
Good morning, my name's Derek Salazar, I'm a coastal engineer with StanTech. Uh, most of you guys I've met before, uh, some new faces, so it's great to meet you. Um, today I'm presenting, uh, two grant applications for sample fourteen of the KEPPRA. Uh, KEPPRA, which is the Coastal Erosion Planning and Response Act Program Grant Application. So this grant application is, um, it's, uh, every two years and it follows the same structure as the legislative, uh, schedule. And, uh, it's designed to implement coastal erosion response projects, um, preferred, you know, erosion response solutions, demonstration projects and related studies to reduce the effects of erosion. It's administered through the Texas General Land Office. And, you, essentially, um, we came before, uh, two years ago and started this work at Fred Stone Park, uh, where we didn't meet that grant deadline for KEPPRA and so, um, essentially the, the county, uh, go to the next. Slide here.
Can you open that Derek?
Oh, yeah.
I can.
I can go to the next slide and this is, yeah.
Just a tablet.
Tablet. Thank you, um, so yeah, we, we discussed a little bit about KEPPRA, um, what it is and so essentially all of the counties, um, along the Texas coast that are in the coastal zone, uh, indicated by that blue line, um, get allocated GO Mesa funds and, um, they can use those funds as matching, as a, as a match requirement for KEPPRA. So KEPPRA has a sixty forty match requirement, so sixty comes from KEPPRA and forty comes from the, uh, the municipalities, in this case, the county. Uh, the typical project length is about twenty-four months, but this is a little more lax, it's not like, um, the CMP, which is the Coastal Management Program Grant Application we applied for last year, uh, which are pretty stringent on timelines because they're, they're federal funds. Uh, so this is a little different, um, and has a little bit, uh, more of a different focus, so KEPPRA focuses more on the erosion response, um, whereas, uh, CMP is a little more geared towards your upland parks, um, public access, so that's why, you know, the, the phase of Fred Stone that's going on now, uh, which is the parking lots and infrastructure improvements, um, makes a great case for CMP. But as far as the shoreline goes and, and the protection, um, from erosion, that's more geared towards KEPPRA. Go to the next one here. Uh, so the first application is, uh, for Fred Stone Park, uh, the shoreline, um, protection Phase Two project, so es- essentially the first phase of this project was funded through Willis County, allocated GO Mesa dollars, um, and focused on data collection, alternatives analysis and conceptual design to address the erosion issues at the park, you know, understanding that there's a heavy investment in the uplands uh, and, and there's a significant erosion issue, uh, at this part of the shoreline. The, this phase was completed in December twenty twenty-three and concluded with the recommendation of implementing a living shoreline, so that's, um, similar to this, this figure, I'm sure you guys are, are familiar with it. We talked about it for CMP last, last year, uh, but essentially it's going to, uh, stop the shoreline erosion by, uh, segmented nearshore breakwater solution with, um, some marsh creation on the lee of that breakwater, so hopefully being able to kind of build up some of that beach. Um, the work includes some data collection, engineering design, taking the design to a seventy percent level as well as permitting. Uh, and so the reason we don't go all the way to a hundred percent is because the permitting process through, um, goes through regulatory agencies and, and that can take a lot of time and then there can be some like last minute, um, changes to the design to make sure you meet the permit requirements, so we know a lot of those things, but some of them, um, some of them are kind of small tweaks that you might have to make to the, to the designs at the end there to take it from seventy to a hundred percent, ready for construction. This project in particular, uh, we, we as a, as a group, uh, at, at StanTech, we, we attend these workshops with the General Land Office and we're able to, uh, work with project managers and kind of advocate for some of these projects. So I got to attend the one here in Laguna Vista at the Cameron County Eco Tourism Center and, uh, you know, got some really good feedback from the project managers out here and, and so our, our strategy, uh, for the grant application is, is kind of in line with some of those recommendations we were given, uh, during the workshop, so getting the, getting the design progress from this concept to a seventy percent level and getting the permitting out of the way during this, this two-year cycle. Um, and then hopefully coming back for the next phase, uh, for finishing up the design and construction, um, in the next KEPPRA cycle. Uh, the total project cost is a hundred eighty-five thousand and, uh, the county match would be that, that forty percent, so seventy-four thousand, uh, that would be committed, um, you know, as, as a part of this project. And I'll go to the next one.
Thank you.
Unless there's any questions, you know, feel free to. Um, the application, the second application is for the Laguna Point, uh, shoreline protection project, this would be a Phase One, um, Phase One project that is going to be geared more towards the shoreline aspects of, of, uh, this park and stabilizing the, um, stabilizing and enhancing the critical, you know, coastal habitats that are, um, right, you know, right there in front of the park infrastructure. And so really what we would do is, um, investigate what are those driving conditions of erosion at that particular site? Where are the worst spots and coming up with, um, some solutions to, um, to kind of slow that erosion down and stop it. And so the, the goal, uh, there's some potential concepts that we show here that, you know, can allow some public access, these dark polygons are meant to be, you know, some structures offshore, uh, similar to, um, rubble mound, breakwaters. Uh, but they can be a combination of these things paired with planting, kind of more greener solutions, even giving like opportunities for learning and, and, uh, I know this.
Does it show the distance from the shore to potentially where they're going to be?
So that's, that's a good question and that's a part of, you know, this first phase is understanding what does that distance have to be to, you know, to, to prevent erosion and maybe even build up some of that shoreline. And so part of the conceptual design is understanding where are those limitations? Is there sea grass in the area and so, you know, part of the thing, uh, part of the, uh, component of this work is data collection, so a sea grass survey to understand the impacts, uh, and maybe areas that we need to avoid to not get hung up in the permitting process in the next phases. And then, um, coastal engineering and alternative analysis, so essentially at the end of this, we would have a preferred alternative that we can then follow that same avenue that we're doing for Fred Stone, uh, where we have a preferred alternative and now we're advocating to move the project forward, uh, to a, a more complete design, uh, and permitting. And so this is kind of the, the first step and, um, makes for, makes for a good case for KEPPRA in, in that it follows a lot of those, uh, KEPPRA goals.
To add to that, you know, um, I did receive a, um, an email, sorry, uh, Commissioner Buckingham's office, sorry, um, inviting us to attend a, a training and, um, I did contact, uh, one of my contacts in the GLO, it's important to also know that the facility that we have, Judge, the, the Van Coaster Center is also right there on the shoreline. So we just wanted to be mindful that there's also investments in the Luna Point such as in Fred Stone. And the erosion is happening rapidly and I know Commissioner Tejada is, you know, always need to be on that.
Right.
It's really negatively impacting the facility.
CMP is every year and KEPPRA is every two years and so right now we're, we're, um, you know, we're talking about the KEPPRA side of things, but this, uh, actually the Laguna Point project, um, has that opportunity and fits the mold for CMP grant funding as well for the upland infrastructure, so your roads, your parking lots, uh, facilities, um, and so that, you know, that would be another, another, you know, agenda item in the future to come back to. Right now, the deadline for KEPPRA is, um, May first, so we've got about a month to put together these applications, uh, where, you know, we work on providing the project need narrative, the scope of work and budget numbers, um, which, you know, a, a lot of these, uh, applications, they, they ask for very detailed, you know, budget allocations, um, and which we're working with, with, um, with the county on, uh, to get these, these together. The, the last things, uh, that we know are going to be important are the letters of commitment and letters of support. So a letter of commitment would come from the county and letters of support, um, we've been told that, you know, on the state level, on federal level, those are, are very, um, advantageous to include in, in those applications. And so that's where we would ask for, you know, help on the county side of things to pull your, your resources together and, and, uh, you know, to make the application much stronger.
So what, what's the total amount of matching, uh, county matching?
Uh, the total amount for both projects?
I, I didn't, I didn't count them.
Um, sixty-six thousand for application two and seventy-four thousand.
Hundred and forty thousand.
Hundred and forty thousand?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I didn't floor that as a number if you do.
And I did not.
And you have that in the, in the Go Mesa?
Yes, I, I apologize, I did not add that to, um, the presentation that we presented today, it stays just to five. Um, as of this morning, I also contacted Mr. Ruben Gavas, who's our county treasurer, to be sure that the, the GO Mesa fund here locally is healthy, we just received another deposit last week. Um, I'll be more than glad to provide that information to the court, um, once it's, it's healthy. It's, um, in the three million.
Okay. Can I ask you a question, can we go back to Fred Stone?
Oh, yes.
No, no, you don't have to.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Uh, I was just saying, uh, on the north side of the, the new pier, right, you know, you've seen that shore?
Right.
We're losing it by the month, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Just wondering, we have these, uh, blocks that we moved over there, they're worth about three hundred, they weigh thirty-five hundred pounds.
Right.
Right, they're two foot high, four foot by two foot wide. Wondering, do you think it'd be, it'd be, just to, just to help save it for now? Could we, because I know that if we move into the shore, we have to get permits and all, and we all need core of engineers.
Right.
Could we put it on our property and just line them up and maybe backfill for right now to help try to save, you know?
Yeah.
Because that shore, I mean, it's already, it, it, it's taken out the foundation.
Right.
And it's almost up to the old restrooms.
Jeez, yeah.
And we're losing it, you know?
Right.
By the day, I, I would say.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think anything you do upland of, of the high tide line is, is not, you know, jurisdictional, um, you know, that keeping you out of that permitting realm. Um, and yeah, I'd love to talk, chat more with you about, um, you know, some, some things you might be able to potentially do in the meantime. It's kind of like a bandaid, you know, until we get this further along, but.
But it's, as long as it's on the high tide, right, on the high tide line?
Up, up, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
After your request, uh, question, I did follow up with the GLO. What they, um, provided, the information I was provided with, as long as it's distressed, like it's distressed being, um, the definition of distressed, I think that's why I feel more comfortable getting more information as to what is the definition of distressed.
Yeah, because I go out there all the time, right, and, uh, and I'm wondering, well, where is our property line, you know, I mean, where, I, I don't know, I mean, we can't.
There, there could also be some nationwide permits that, that you might fall into that category to, you know, save, you know, or stop uh, as an immediate, you know, emergency action, um, and yeah, I'd love to continue that conversation.
Just about that.
Something you should do in the meantime.
Yeah, just for the meantime, like a little bandaid.
Right, or even, uh, hurricane, you know, preparedness.
Yes.
Seasons coming, yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is just to approve that line. So let's see, we didn't do line number two, right? All right, so move to approve, Judge? I have a motion by Commissioner, uh, De La Paz. Applying, and second, and second by, uh, Commissioner, uh, Alani Somorano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature five percent, aye?
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item twenty-three, discussion item to approve submitting Coastal Erosion Planning Response Act, SEPPRA, grant application to the Texas General Office, GLO, for Phase Two of the Fred Stone Park Shoreline Protection Project on or before May first, twenty twenty-five, action required. I think we covered both, you know?
Yes, this, we presented on both for KEPPRA funding.
Can I do that motion? So move. I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, Alani Somorano. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, signature five percent, aye? And all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Line item number twenty-four, approve monthly reports. So move to approve, Judge? I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz to approve. Second by Commissioner, uh, Alani Somorano, any more discussion? All in favor, signature five percent, aye?
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we go to line item number twenty-five, approve progress request.
Travel request for extension agent Roger Masina to attend the twenty twenty-five TCFA B-Dark Programing Team Book Assembly, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Travel request for extension agent Roger Masina to attend its Southern Chapter and Storytelling Improvement Conference, April twenty-first through twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Travel request for short office minister assistant, Asadello, to attend the Texas Public Information Act seminar in San Marcos, Texas, on May eighteen, fifteen, twenty twenty-five. Travel request for Rainbow Volunteer Firefighters, Ramon Salinas, Orlando La Moya, Gabriel Barza, Iloa Zamorano, Eric Moreno and Iloa Zamorano Junior, to attend the ninety-six Texas musical fire school in College Station, Texas, on July nineteenth through twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Travel request for Annette, Siena Rosa and Orient Franks, first chair to attend the Civil War Conference in Davison, Texas, on May seventh through the ninth, twenty twenty-five. Travel request for county order, Mariano de Fronan, Marlon Nero and First Assistant, Rebecca Science. How are request for County Order Manuel Escartman, Robo Naro, and First Assistant Rebecca Science to attend the 67th Annual W.C. M. County Order for Superior College Station on April 29th, 2026, 2025.
On number five, that's going to be Victor Valmedes, that's going to be attending. The prosecutor's going to attend for that.
Instead of?
Instead of, because I didn't, I hadn't named the prosecutor yet. Because we have some trials that were kind of going out. We weren't sure who was going to be available. So it's going to be Victor Valmedes. That's only change.
Can I? Can I entertain a motion to have that adjustment instead of? So move to make that adjustment. And approve this. I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Alani Somorano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, say aye. And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number twenty-six, approval of treasurer's report.
I do have my report, I believe. Do you all have it in your surfaces?
Yes, we do. We sure do.
Really nothing of interest to report besides, just as you can see, the interest rates have been coming down in the investment pools.
But we're still locked in at a higher rate.
Yes. Our bank is giving us a two point one on the interest rate. One of our pools is at four point four eight and the other one's at four point four three.
On the general fund, this is deposit four point nine withdrawal four point eight. Obviously, is that like a one-time deal or? Or is that pertaining to what we have invested?
Oh, on the deposits for, where it says four point nine?
Yes, sir.
Yes, some of it was the investments that I was moving, uh, from one investment to another.
Oh, okay. So it's, it's not a typical.
No, it's just like that, uh, it catches everything in there.
And then the other question I have is the, the self-funded insurance?
Yes.
Right, we do have it.
Uh, so if you look at the next page, if you add the totals, add the total, which would be eighty-five thousand and six hundred and eighty thousand and then five hundred thousand. It's a little over twelve point two, I mean, one point two million. I don't have a calculator with me.
All right. So move to approve, Judge, treasurer's report.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, say aye. And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number twenty-seven, approval of budget amendments.
We do have some budget amendments. District clerk, there's a line item transfers from one line item to the next, no change to the budget. Same for just in the piece one, no change to the budget, just line item transfers. The same for just in the piece five. Uh, line item transfer between certain line items or no change to budget. As well for the sheriff's office budget and Joe administration for no change to added budgets. Fund forty, the quota multi-tax line item transfer between, between some line items in that budget, no change to budget. As well for the attorney's budget. Fund fifty, District Attorney's drug seizure, there is an increase to the budget between certain line items. Both revenue and expenses. And finally, the DA's victim assistance grant, fund fifty-two. Line item transfer between some line items, no change to budget.
My recommendation, Commissioner, that we approve the the amendments as, as requested, however. There's three of them that have been signed. I'm sure there's been some questions, right?
Yes.
Actually, there's two. Two of them belong to the sheriff and the sheriff reducing five. So I'm not suggesting that we approve all, but I feel better signing off on one.
One close copies of the, of the certs, one close copies of the signed budgets once we get them.
Can I entertain a motion to?
Move, move to approve, uh, with the exception of the three being signed? Or just approval mode?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think what I'm saying is that I don't think that the, the other just took it upon themselves to do without.
No, no.
But I'm suggesting that we approve it.
Okay, move to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Alani Somorano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, say aye. And all opposed, same sign.
Please sign the report, sir. Thank you.
Next one, Missy, your next. Line number twenty-eight, uh, let's see, we, we took care of the amendments, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, line item number twenty-eight, approval of tax collector's report. Missy?
Sir?
What's your take on how we're doing?
Well, I, I mean, our collections have been good. It's starting to slow down now. I mean, we collected most of the portion of the current year.
Okay, and we're at a, a per se collection rate of let's see, is it eighty-nine point oh seven?
Eighty-nine, yeah.
All right, and last year we were ninety-one?
Yes.
So we're, we're kind of down for that?
Below, yeah.
Have we, uh, done nothing for the, but would, would you say that that is maybe windmills or nothing?
No, the, the windmills already have been. I know we're issuing on this new supplement and we got in, we're issuing some refunds, some big refunds. Because of the disabled ad or other issues that.
Hope so.
But we do that every year or is it changed, did it change?
It, no, it's, it's just that the veteran had replied and we got for two years, he got a big, like a big refund.
Okay.
That was real big, but still big.
I guess what I'm asking, what I'm asking in your experience, should we be concerned with the eighty-nine point oh seven versus eighty-one point three?
I mean, we're still, we're still getting monies coming in. It's just, I guess it's started to trickle down compared to October and November.
Did, uh, did line market contact you? About anything, I don't know if this is right, but they did reach out and enlighten what was going on with disaster. Their letters kind of.
Yeah, they're going to slow down on the, on the disaster area.
Yes, now.
Not all of it.
Not all of it, yeah.
I don't know if that attributed to that or maybe.
No, I mean.
I know it's to go with the delinquents.
Yeah, that would be on the delinquent. Basically, our, our current.
And how are we doing with it?
Delinquent. I know we collected pretty good because of the people that received those monies from the bank account. So a lot of them were paying their delinquent on that, so, which is.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So the the collections through March of twenty twenty-five has been two hundred and nine thousand? And it's budgeted two hundred and sixty thousand somewhere? And that's from, you say, you're saying that's from the, the, those checks that go down, yes?
Okay, that, so the whole amount for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five is two sixty. So we're at two oh nine, so we're almost hitting the two sixty. Yeah, and I know the bulk of it.
And we're not going to have a tax sale in Maine. The lowest, there is no, they just told us.
They just have it?
No, yeah, because there's not enough, like people are coming in and paying. Which is a good time.
Okay, Missy, well, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Prove to approve, Judge.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number twenty-nine, review of special claims. And that.
Just to review, Judge.
Just to review, so we're okay with that? All right. Line item number thirty, review of monthly employee overtime. And that.
The JOKA?
You skipped the victory number there.
Oh, they skipped thirty, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, review monthly report on jail count. I think the last one I saw was seventy-eight. We've been in the seventies.
It says seventy-nine here.
Okay, seventy-nine.
But I mean, that was on Monday.
So, and that's where, and I think the lowest that I've seen is seventy-six or seventy-five.
So I think we discussed to make sure that they're, I guess, their counts are reflective of what they're reporting to the auditor's office.
Yes. Yes, now, we, we did, I had a short conversation, the author and I pertaining to how we're doing with the meals as far as cost in general, Commissioner. And we budgeted a hundred thousand, but we do have, um, I mean, we all know the groceries will not, right, or food will not be given. So it looks like we're going to be way up by that for the year.
But compared, compared to where we were before in picking them up in Bronson?
Well, and that's the other part, is that compared meals to meals, we're going to be not too far from where we were before in terms of the cost of the meal itself, to my surprise. However, that's not counting, like Commissioner is mentioning, the labor and the time and overtime and the overtime to be able to go all the way and get it three times a day. So hopefully. Okay, and, and so the, the idea here is that I don't recall when the count came down, but keep in mind that we're not paying the same amount every, every day. We're basing it on the count.
Yes.
Right? Which I think previously we weren't, we were just getting flat.
I think they were just ordering flat money.
So, so, so I don't recall, uh, how long it's been since we got back down to the seventies or so forth? You know, so maybe in the future.
It's been a few months.
We, we only had the month of February, which triggered a fourteen thousand, which was high. And, and moreover, February had one or two days less, so. So that worked kind of against it. I think we got an average of fifteen-five times the twelve, and that puts us at whatever figures on. Yeah, and that's going to be up there, but that is not so much that we didn't get a good deal, it's more of the price of just food itself.
So Judge, I can, I can let you know, so they, for some reason, I think because I worked on the contract, they're including me up with a copy of the invoice every time it comes in. And so for February, uh, they invoiced seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one meals at two dollars per meal. So it came out to fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two. So I don't, I don't know how many.
Days it happened.
How many people that is. Somebody would have to do the math on that.
Well, people and days, right?
Correct. So that was for February. That was for February only.
So fourteen what?
Fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two. And it was seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one meals. I'm sure. I don't do that at all.
So the best memory is probably was around seven thousand two hundred. So it's going to be close to the two hundred dollar. Move by ten to a hundred.
So with the, the seventy-one thirty-one. Did I get that? How many days were in February?
I think it's twenty.
Twenty.
Is that about eighty-three, eighty-four meals on average? So I guess it's a high and a low. I'm just taking an average, so. Uh, I, I, I know it's, it goes on, um, daily counts. And I know commissioners have approved an additional three meals.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so it's, whatever the daily count is, plus three.
Plus three.
So that was what, what that should be. So if you're looking at a average of, say, eighty-three, eighty-four, then you're looking at eighty being the, the they make eighty to eighty-two in the daily. And then the. But now that, that, um, I believe auditor's office is getting the daily email, the email on a daily so that they can keep track of and maybe just, um, estimate what it's even going to be for the, for the next month. Because I got this bill in, towards the, the middle to latter part of March. So they bill it two or three weeks after the end of the prior month. So gives you an estimate of, of what that particular month is going to be like.
So that's where we're at with that. If any more questions to come, and then we go to line item thirty-two, we'll confirm with Commissioner's court legal counsel regarding any contemplated litigation and on negotiations in bottom counties to pose any interest pursuant to VTC, ground on co section, five five one point oh seven one, and deliberation regarding pending contemplated litigation. So do we have any?
Not anything that falls under this, um, for this time.
Uh, if there's not, can I entertain a motion to take no action on line item thirty-three A and B?
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner. Let's see, a second by Commissioner, any, any, all in favor, signature, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Can I entertain a motion?
Did you skip number thirty?
What?
Thirty-one?
Yes.
No, we don't, we don't do motion on overtime.
Thirty, just thirty-one.
Yeah, they just repeated.
Yeah, yeah, we kind of.
I think you skipped it, you went to thirty-one and then you went back to thirty-two, thirty.
I saw it, man.
Just checking, just checking.
So, so, did, did I have a, a count on the journey or not? Did I have a vote on the journey? No? Okay, so I had a motion and a second. Did we get that far?
Yeah.
No, no.
Okay, can I entertain a motion? Uh, so, and I'll second by Commissioner, any, any, all in favor, signature, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.